Hi, good evening. Welcome to the Five November 2025 edition of the planning, Kenny Bonport Planning Board. To start with the attendance here, we have four members, including a new member, Rick Sherman. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm not sure where the mic is, planning on being here.
What is that?
Do you know if Mike West is?
He's not going to be able to attend.
Thank you. So there'll be four of us, which gives us a quorum. Did folks have a chance to look at the minutes that came out?
I did.
Yes.
Yeah. Would you care to make a motion, please?
I would make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four? We'll start with the first item on the agenda. It's two, four, one, two, zero, one, Rabbit Run subdivision. This is a continuation of the initial review. It's been on hiatus for a little while. But this is the preliminary site application for a subdivision.
Hello, I'm Bill O'Connor with Longview Partners. Thanks so much for seeing us again. It has been several months since we appeared before the board last time. To catch you all up, one of the reasons for the delays, we were lacking a little bit of information with regard to our stormwater plan, and that was really due to, we had a group of professionals that were helping us create the subdivision plan that had sort of in-house engineers of their own, and they unfortunately had to shutter their business. And so that left us scrambling to get somebody who could, you know, address the the stormwater report quickly and in a, you know, in a somewhat cost-effective manner, seeing as how other money has kind of already been spent that went nowhere. As a result, though, we did get Terradyne Consultants LLC to do the stormwater plan, which they have done and submitted to the town and to Acorn Engineering for their review. They also submitted the stormwater permit by rule to DEP and received the approval for that on October the 22nd. There were several items, or a handful of items anyway, in the planner's menu that we have been working to address, and if you'd like, I'd be more than happy to address the comments that were remaining based on our last meeting. The first comment was number fourteen in the application requirements portion of the menu, the menu, the memo. And the comment was that there was a well and area that was shown on both the high intensity soil survey that was prepared by my company, as well as our wetland delineation plan and the subdivision plan, but it, for whatever reason, didn't carry over into the Terradyne Consulting LLC stormwater design. We were able to rectify that, and Terradyne has issued a new sheet, C dash 1.0, which does show that wetland area on their plan. In terms of what that means for wetland-
Can I consult you for just a second? We've had a series of back and forths on this that I've been trying to follow online. You just referenced an item fourteen, did you say?
Yes, from the memorandum of October 27th.
This is the staff memo.
Staff memo.
Okay, another piece of paper. That I don't have in front of me. Okay. Apologize.
Oh, no worries. I do have a copy of the memo.
George has brought it up online for me here.
Anyway, there was a small wetland area of approximately 271 square feet that was not included in the engineering of the roadway plans. What we wanted to make sure was, you know, because we're always dealing with tiered thresholds for wetland alteration, that this wasn't going to put the overall wetland alteration totals for the project over 4,300 square feet, and that's had the need for an RPA permitting, which it didn't. You know, we're still fairly well underneath that one-tenth of one acre wetland alteration total.
Excuse me. Soil survey, this is nothing to do with scroll up.
Scroll up?
Yep.
So not item fourteen?
Keep going. Oh, maybe it's on the version. What date did you have?
December 31st, Roman.
Here's the.
Another version. Yeah, this tracks with what you're saying, Bill. There's a small patch of wetland shown on the wetland delineation. Staff asks to resolve any discrepancies, which is what you were trying to do.
That is correct, yes. And hopefully what we've done. The next-
Say one more time, what's the gist of what you've done?
We just wanted to make, we wanted to get- I can show you here. This small area of wetland was not included on the Terradyne sheets, and it was, for whatever reason, also not included on the original subdivision plan. That's now re-added to the Terradyne sheets.
How did Acorn pick that up?
I'm not sure, because they probably have a copy of our high intensity soil survey.
Can you go to the mic, or you can take it with you?
I believe that it was identified because they were thorough enough in their review to note that there were wetland areas depicted on both the wetland delineation and vernal pool location plan and the high intensity soil survey that just never got carried over into the other plan sets.
And is that the discrepancy that's listed in here?
Yes, sir, it is.
So what's the resolution at this point?
The, both plans have been amended so that this wetland is depicted. I don't know that we need to necessarily call it out as something new, but in the-
So the staff would agree that this is no longer an issue?
Yeah, so it's on the plans, it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next item that we were working to address back when I was here in February was the stormwater management plan that we, it wasn't complete at the time, and that's when we decided we needed to change horses in terms of the professionals working on that part of this. And so we did engage Terradyne LLC, and they have created stormwater management plan and have gained permit by rule approval from DEP for that plan. The next question had to do with high-value wetland and inland fisheries and wildlife vernal pool habitat that's located off-site.
Which number was that?
Number thirty-two. And where the wetland area was located off-site, the best we were able to do was impose a 250-foot critical terrestrial habitat that would be associated with that wetland. And so that really only affects a small portion of the southern part of the proposed subdivision. And I took the time to figure out what the total critical terrestrial habitat area is on this subdivision plan, and that came out to approximately 92,614 square feet. The proposed new clearing within that 250-foot critical terrestrial habitat for the off-site significant vernal pool totaled 12,482 plus or minus square feet. So that's thirty, thirteen percent of the total within the 250-foot critical terrestrial habitat which is proposed for clearing. The vernal pool clearing limits rules state that if you have a significant pool on your property, you can only clear 25% of the tree canopy within 250 feet of that significant vernal pool. This isn't located on our property, but I thought just to dot every I and cross every T, we probably better do the exercise for the clearing limits just to make sure we're complying with the spirit of the rules, which at a thirteen percent proposed clearing limits, we are more than-
And there's no, there's no possibility of clearing being done on the other side, on the-
We don't control that part of the property. This is only the portion of this subdivision that is within 250 feet of that.
What is the situation on this side of the property where the habitat?
I don't know. I haven't ever seen it. It was just on a map and brought to our attention during a previous review.
Because that circle, you know, is a, it doesn't discriminate for a property line.
Except for, our understanding of it is the affect that it can have on your property really is only on the subject property. So if this were a neighbor's vernal pool and it was significant and we didn't know it was there, it would be very hard to account for that. Because this is published information, we're really trying to be as conservative as possible and just make sure that everybody's comfortable with tree clearing within what our published habitat limits.
I'm saying something different.
Sure.
If in fact, this was an area that had already been developed on the, off your property, however, the 250-foot from the, extended onto your property, if they've already used up the 25%, there's none left for you.
And that's where the issue of the property line really does have to come into play. And that, you know, that's an interpretation that we've received from DEP historically, but it might be worth revisiting now. You know, it's, you know, what, it would be, it would be an undue encumbrance on a potential property owner if somebody with a significant vernal pool on their property used up all of the clearing limits, even though that 250-foot critical terrestrial habitat was extending over the property line.
I'm not sure I'm following that.
It's a tough one.
I don't know that it's tough at all. I think, I think it's who got there first. It's as simple as that. And you, in fact, do use up 25% or 13% of it, that 13% is no longer available to the other property.
Correct.
It's gone. You got there first.
We could certainly-
I'm asking you, did you get there first? And you're saying, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know exactly where that pool is. The mapping isn't necessarily specific enough other than a dot in the center of that habitat to, to make my offset from. I mean, I'd be happy to take a look at historical aerial photos and try to generate what has been cleared, but I don't know that the answer would be satisfactory or scientific.
All I'm asking is, what's there now?
I believe it's forested.
So that would be a good answer.
It would be, you know, if you're, if you're considering our site, if you look at where the, I think it's called Salty Acres Campground is, this vernal pool would be somewhat to the north and east of that, and in what I believe is forested area.
Help me out, guys.
Yeah, so the legislation, yes, the legislation did change for significant vernal pools. And so it's my understanding that the state would be evaluating that 25% disturbance. It doesn't sound like the applicant has gone to the state to see about the 25% has been disturbed in that area. So I would recommend that would be the course of action to make sure. If they DPs fine with it, then, yeah.
Yeah, and I'd be fine with it, too. I just, I just don't want to say, okay, that's great, you only taken 13% and come to find out 25% has already been taken.
But wouldn't that be, let's say that 25% had been taken by somebody else, and that would mean that the landowners couldn't clear any tree canopy in order to do anything there. That would be rendering that lot unbuildable, which I don't know that that necessarily is the intent of the vernal pool regulations.
I don't know. I wasn't there.
Right.
But that's how I have read it in the past, unless you tell me that it's changed.
Yeah, I mean, the legis-
Just ferret out where we are here.
Yeah, the legislature did change the statute, so that's where I-
Make it less conservative or more?
It's making it more restrictive. So they have a do not disturb within 100-foot buffer of a significant vernal pool, so that there's no disturbance whatsoever, and then within the 250-foot limits, there can only be a 25% cumulative reduction on all properties. Doesn't matter about property lines. And so that's not something for us to decide. That's something that the state, they're going to have to go into the state and, and make that evaluation.
But you're clarifying what Bill's concerned is, is that, I'm not sure that rule makes sense.
That's not for us to decide, yeah.
What I'm hearing is that Galen, who pays, you know, more attention to this than I do, as a retired guy, is saying, yeah, that in fact is what the state's saying.
So talk me through my burden of proof here. You know, how can I satisfy you? Is it going to be a letter from the state DPs saying that this is okay? Because that's, that's kind of hard to get out of that.
Yeah, my understanding is it's a permit by rule, but I could be misunderstanding it. I'm not in the state rulemaking process, but that would be the process to go about for a significant vernal pool. If this was a non-significant vernal pool, certainly we wouldn't be having that conversation.
What if we didn't know? What if you didn't know? What if you had to come across this information? And there just happened to be a vernal pool there and we were having-
Right.
And if it wasn't mapped, we wouldn't know, but when they do these types of surveys, you're supposed to look at your properties for vernal pools.
But we aren't allowed to look on neighbors' lots. You know, that's, that's the hardest part in all of this, is that this is an off-site affect that is, you know, really potentially a stumbling block for a portion of, of this property. But let me, let me dig into that a little bit more. I think worst-case scenario, we would prepare a clearing limits permit by rule, which is, you know, fairly easy thing for DEP to approve.
That'd be great.
Roughly, where is that in relation to the rest of the state?
It is off-site across Route Nine. And yeah, it's, it's pretty far away, you know, the, the 250-foot-
So it's not even on the map?
No, it's not on our map at all.
Oh, okay.
Now, there were some overhead shots, though, right? That it hadn't been identified in the package?
There may have been, there may have been, as part of the beginning with habitat maps, that we had to submit during a previous phase, showed an off-site vernal pool. Honestly, though, I think it was something that the former chair, Ms. Perlmutter, had unearthed in some of her research.
Like, going back to the sketch plan days.
Right, correct. You know, like Galen was describing, previously, we didn't have to consider off-site affects for vernal pools until the legislation changed. It used to be that the, you know, property line acted like a wall.
All right, thank you.
That is the, in the application requirements, that was the last outstanding item that we had to address. And in terms of performance standards, the only remaining item to address is a letter from the fire chief addressing the fire department's ability to turn their engine around at the cul-de-sac. That was something that he was contacted about when the previous project manager was still part of this project in February of 2025, and then when the person closed his business, this just sort of fell by the wayside. I have spoken to him twice now in two days, and he promises me that the letter is forthcoming. He's just a little bit backed up because he had some time off last week.
Understood.
And that was, the last of the items, as far as Acorn Engineering, they've signed off on all the engineering plans as of October the 21st, and the, you know, final plan sets in terms of getting the corrections on the plans have submitted, been submitted to Nadia today.
So with respect to that, that was a terrific series of back and forths, and I have to commend both you and Acorn for how little lag time there was. It was pretty impressive.
They do a great job. Both engineering firms are very responsive.
You guys established some communication and you maintained it, and that's just terrific to see. Galen pointed out to me before this meeting that in the, Acorn's response to your last response, they, they talked about the, the issue about the HydroCAD model having an extra proposed lot being accounted for in error, which has been reduced from 1.065 acres to 0.95. And they came back and said, "The majority of the runoff generated from individual lot development will discharge off-site without treatment in accordance with the town standard," and it quotes 415-1115B1, which is our subdivision regs. "The project's stormwater management does not demonstrate a 40% reduction in total suspended solids, which is in our regs. It should be noted that this requirement reflects an outdated state standard, and it is no longer consistent with the current state regulations." So Galen brought it to our attention just to make sure that the board didn't have a problem with not needing something that's in our subdivision regs that is more stringent than the state regulations. In fact, only in the state regulations apparently used to have it, you say so many years ago.
Yeah, 25-plus years ago. That was the, the TSS was a measuring tool that they had, and since then, the state has updated their best management practices. We just haven't updated our subdivision regulations because of that. But what I wanted to bring your attention is Acorn is recommending, you know, this is kind of a little bit separate, but related to this applicant, that we need to update that provision in our stormwater regs, because what's the intent? Like, what do we want the developers and the applicants to meet? The intent of the best management practices that are currently being followed, or do we want something else, depending on their impact?
So, so the, will that be, would that work with Acorn? Be funded through the code office? Is that how that's going to work?
Yeah, we have, we do have some money for consultants that we can certainly use if the board thinks it's worthwhile to pursue.
I'm, I'd be interested what the board says. My own gut reaction to this is our consultant that we use and rely on regularly is basically saying, "This stormwater management plan does meet best management practices. It's consistent with the state regs today, but you guys have something in your regs that is vestigial." So I'd be comfortable with saying that the board, since it's in the subdivision regs, we would have discretion to say, no, we're going to, we're going to waive that requirement, assuming on, on condition that the code office was going to be working with Acorn to get the language updated sometime in the near future.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you guys think about that?
I'm in favor of that. I'm very comfortable with that.
I think that's fine.
So you'd be all right with that?
Yep, yep.
I hate to give you an, I can't give you an action item, but-
No. Yeah, I think the staff recognizes that that, that's an outdated section. We haven't looked at that subdivision regs for quite some time, and it might be beneficial for us if we-
There's only so many ways you can spend, we can spend our money.
I know, I know. Yep.
Well, I guess as long as it is a situation where it's outdated as opposed to it's something that's unique to the town.
It's not a research. We don't know of any reason why it was like that other than this used to be what, Acorn's saying it used to be what the state- I wasn't, where was I 25 years ago? I wasn't in the state.
Yeah, I think, I think what, what Acorn would like to hear from the board, from a guidance perspective, is do you want subdivisions to follow Chapter 500 regulations that are currently in place or not? That's the stormwater provisions for main DEP, for MS4.
Do we have any other regulations that are more stringent than state regulations, or do we adhere to it?
In stormwater area.
When it comes to stormwater, this is where, again, there is a little bit of a disconnect between your land use ordinance and your subdivision ordinance. Your land, your land use ordinance has for site plan reviews, a 10,000-square foot of disturbance or building footprint that would trigger subdivision, would trigger stormwater review and standards. But your subdivision regs have this language in there that is conflicting with that.
You know, I apologize for taking your time here, but, but my draw this would be to bring our town standards in line with the state.
Okay.
And to have the professional guidance of our, of our contracted expert here to say what that would entail. Unless there's, there's no expertise on this board, and what I'm gathering is, is this experience in the code office, but there's not stormwater expertise on the board. We rely on Acorn. And they're hinting, they're giving us examples of where we're, we're not aligned. Why not? Can we afford to, can we afford not to take the time to say, make a pass? What changes would you recommend?
Yep.
Without turning it into a research project.
No, no.
That's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
I'm having nods from the rest of the board, yeah.
If there are other instances that we're aware of, would we allow Acorn and us in the state figure that all out at once rather than once and twice?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Rather than we're aware of it, I'd like Acorn to read those sections and say, this is, you're missing this, or this is old, and what would it take to tune this up, to bring it up to standard?
And I don't want to complicate things further, but Chapter 500 is also being updated as we speak, so there's other provisions.
By the state?
Yes.
All more reason to ask for this expertise. And by all means, say to them, what would it take to bring it up to standard today and in line with where you see it going in the next year?
Okay, yep.
That would, that's how I'd do it if this was, if I wasn't retired, so.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, no trouble at all.
So, so what we're saying is, is that we're good with the stormwater report in that regard, but just know that we're going to waive that section of that requirement.
With the 40% reduction?
Of, of the 40% reduction. That's right. 415-1115B1.
At this stage, I feel like we have a fairly complete application with the only sort of hanging issue being the fire chief's letter and the receipt of the PBR permission for the clearing limits on the significant vernal pool habitat that's in the vicinity. Knowing that, I'm hoping that you would be open to perhaps scheduling a public hearing on this for an upcoming meeting.
Let's, I think so. Let's go down through the board and ask, from your reading of the, not just the stormwater report, but the most recent update of, of materials, are there any questions? We start with George?
There are a couple of items on that planning board memo. Things like parking, monuments, and that sort of thing, sidewalks. I know that you will address those, but I didn't know if they've been put on plans yet or if they're forthcoming.
They are forthcoming, but they have not yet been committed to the plan set.
No, thanks.
And since you mentioned sidewalks, you don't have any problem waiving the-
Well, I know we had talked about it, but I don't think it had been officialized yet.
We've got no problem waiving the sidewalks in this size of development, I don't think.
Yes.
Anything else? Peter?
The only question I had was, or maybe this relates also to the fire chief's, do you plan on leaving a circle in the middle of the cul-de-sac for grass, or is that all to be paved? Would make it easier to turn the truck around?
I believe we're going to leave it as natural as possible, but the, the roadway there is, is wide enough so that the truck can get around. I believe it's a 70-foot radius there at your cul-de-sacs to make it, you know, more than generous for it to swing around the, the full turn.
That's all I have.
I'm good. I had a couple of small things, I think. The stormwater system, the report, the plan, rather, has four pages in it that talk about maintenance of the system. I think you're, there's been some talk that maybe the HOA agreement would, would cover how that was going to be maintained and all. That's absent right now.
Correct. I believe, what did you end up deciding on that, Jessica? We, I know that we're, we're still, we're still working through some of the specific language in the HOA docs, but I do-
Yeah, I think you're being generous. I think, I think it's, it's kind of a pro forma document that you have in there right now. I don't think it pretends to be otherwise, but that, that subject's missing.
I believe it's in the outline of our HOA that we, yeah.
Jessica, can you introduce yourself?
Yes. Hi, Jessica Jolene of Mobile Studio Design and Rabbit Run. I believe that that is in our HOA outline that we did provide. And I do not recall the details of exactly that, but yes, I was nine months pregnant and I'm at that last meeting. And, but I do know that it's going to be in the HOA, and we're going to make it as simple as possible for the, the three houses that are there, yeah.
Let me just say it this way. I think, I think I would not want to hold up moving forward with this application based on the current state of the HOA agreement, unless others feel we should. But we, you will need a functional, clear, professionally-written HOA agreement for the final. And it needs to address something straightforward that says how this is going to be maintained. You've got three people and you've got a, a plan right now that says, hey, if we get heavy rainfalls, this is going to have to be inspected or checked or, make those two things in sync. Who's going to do it? How's that going to be agreed? And yeah, there'll have to be a transition- And yeah, there'll have to be a transition period before the lots are sold and all built and all of that, but what's the vision? You know, is someone, you know, the president of the HOA, whoever that's gonna be then? Same with road maintenance agreement. How's the road clearing gonna be handled?
Thank you, we have, we have a lawyer working on that.
Yeah, yeah. You're not the first, and this is a relatively small subdivision that just wasn't attended to, understood.
I just wanted to make one quick note. The information we're waiting on from the fire chief is sufficient water, not about the turnaround. The turnaround is fine, it meets all of our dimensional standards. So, you'll notice on the memo, the, the pending review is under the sufficient water performance standard, not under the turnaround.
In speaking with him about that yesterday, it, I was unable to get a hold of exactly what he's looking for in terms of a guarantee on this. You know, it's, I mean, we certainly could submit documentation from well drillers in the area stating that they believe that there is ample water supply in this vicinity of Kenny Bonkport, but, you know, he was kind of getting in the weeds, talking about the need to drill a second well on every lot, and it just didn't seem to jive with our experience here with fire suppression previously. So if there's any guidance you can give to me in terms of what you would like to see, I, I would love to know what that is, because I wasn't able to relay to him exactly what I thought that the board was looking for in that way.
Usually, in the past when we've had subdivisions that are somewhat close to a water resource, we just usually get a letter from the chief that says, you know, "We're close enough to the resource that we can either fill the truck or run a hose from the resource."
He had described a limit of about four thousand feet in there. I know there is a, a fire pond at Prospect Reserve subdivision, which is just down Route Nine here from where this is. So if I can maybe say that that's within four thousand feet of Rabbit Run subdivision, would that be acceptable? Or is there?
You're asking, you're asking not even to speculate on what the fire chief.
Right, I don't, you know, I just, I wasn't able to parse out from the, from the way that that was phrased exactly what the board was going to want for.
The board just wants the fire chief to say okay.
Yes.
We don't wanna get, we're not gonna get in the middle of that.
I mean, isn't there, isn't there anything in writing to the fire chief or from him, what the specific ask is?
I mean, I, I was asking him for that on the phone yesterday, and I just did not do a good job of conveying what it was I was looking for from him.
So, I, I can reach out to Jay and also maybe we can confer about subdivision.
That'd be great.
Expectations as well.
And that will protect you as well, so he doesn't change what he's looking for each time you talk to him.
Right.
I also wanted to clarify that the turnaround, we don't have concerns with it. Meets all of our dimensional requirements and is good to go.
You, you, I think sometimes, you know, people get mistaken that the board has this great wealth of expertise, technical expertise. I think what we, what, the most, my opinion, what the most important thing we do is we try to make sure that the right communication has happened, and that will satisfy us if there's an affirmation of that. Right now, if I ask a question and one side says yay and the other side says what, that's, that's a red flag, that's all. So that's, that's why these old-fashioned methods of getting together and talking about this in a public meeting still exist.
We definitely keep after it.
Force communication.
And, and Bill, if I can help you a little bit with eleven point two, that section. So if you're outside of a thousand feet of a public water supply, that's where he wants some sort of alternative, and I would look at that. It's eleven point two A four, and there's some guidance there on what the alternatives could be for the, the fire chief. But certainly, we can, you know, coordinate with you and the chief to see what, what you can do to make it work. Appreciate it. Yep.
Okay, with that, I would make a motion that this application is complete. Is there a second for that?
A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So that is what allows us then to go forward and say that we would schedule a public hearing for this at the earliest, at the next meeting, is that?
Yep, that'll be the nineteenth.
Nineteen, please?
Yep.
Nineteenth of November? Perfect.
I'll just reach out to the press. Yep, so November nineteenth, public hearing.
Excellent, thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. With that, we will move to the next item on the agenda. It's number two five one zero zero one, one twenty-seven Ocean Ave, Breakwater Inn. And this says initial review, but this is a continued initial review, am I?
That was a, that was a typo.
Yeah, no, no, it's okay. I'm just checking myself there. Pretty sure of that. Hello?
Hi, I'm John Einseedler, representing the Breakwater Inn.
John, what was your last name again?
Einseedler, rolls off the tongue.
Good German name.
Swiss, believe it or not.
Swiss?
Yeah.
You remind us why we're here?
Well, for this particular project, the Breakwater Inn is proposing to remove what is currently a spa, which they want to turn into four additional beds, not units, which would require four parking places, but the spa required fourteen, so there would be a net reduction of ten parking places. No change in the exterior of the building, on the site, plantings, lighting. No change.
So help me visualize this. Right, today you have a spa, a room that's a spa with spa equipment. That's gonna go away and instead will be two beds?
Will be four additional hotel units.
Four units?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and four hotel rooms.
So, I'll just, I'm, I'm going back over the, the package here we went to last time, because what you just described was, was kind of a replay of what we talked about last time, and yet we decided that the initial review was not complete. And I seem to recall, it was either this one or the other one, or both together, we said, "Oh, what, what we wanna see is a layout of the parking." Because what, what you just described was trading fourteen for four, and yet the write-up says we're gonna add, we're gonna reduce the parking requirements by nine spaces.
Well, so, well, that hap- that happens when, when we get to the next project.
No, 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 this is, this is for this one.
Well, it, it, they, the next project has, it's combined parking. So if, if.
Yeah, they do have combined.
It's, it's a, it's a combined.
The parking's combined, but, but this is, at this time, the Breakwater would like to convert the spa space into four new keys. To four new keys. Additionally, oh, at the inn building, they'd like to add one key in the staff housing.
Yep, they're converting the employee.
And I was calling them keys, and Galen corrected my terminology is, it's, it's, the Kenny Bonkport ordinance didn't have hotel rooms, it's hotel beds.
Yeah.
So, when I had said one key, it, it turned into five.
Okay, 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 so this is a combined, and I, I, I do recall that now, thank you.
So we.
So I'm sorry, how many car, how many parking spaces do you need for the converted housing?
Five, and, and that reduction of, yeah, it would be five additional, because the staff housing does, wasn't counted as parking.
Oh, is that right?
Originally, so it would be an additional five parking places.
So you're net plus five between the two projects?
No, we, we're, we're minus ten on one and plus five on the other for a net five.
Net five, yeah.
Yeah, reduction.
Right, and we said last time you were gonna provide a parking layout that said, "Where, where are those?" Some of them are in the field, and it was, it was all kinds of questions I saw go back and forth.
Yep, and the, the parking layout they did provide, it's, it's a.
Can we look at that?
Yep, I can pull it up.
That'd be cool, then we can visualize it.
Yeah, it's, and, and that was, I, I don't know when that parking was originally approved. It was reaffirmed in twenty-eleven.
Okay, and it hasn't changed since, that's what you're saying?
No.
So John, would you be able to, to bring your microphone over here?
Yeah.
And help us guide us? I, I brought one of the old building plans for the Breakwater, but I, it's, it's the same layout. I just wanna make sure that we're all talking the same language when it comes to the units and... Because this is a big building that has gone, undergone so many changes, and you have been definitely instrumental in reviewing this.
Yes, yeah, I didn't, I didn't work on this particular building.
On one twenty-seven?
Yep, correct.
I thought you did.
I did, I did some of the spa review, but I don't, I didn't.
We're gonna look at the parking, right? Well, we, we, I wanna.
I wanna see this structure to make sure I'm reviewing this correctly. And planning board members, if you wanna come over to look at this, that way we're all on the same page. So there's three stories to this structure at present, is my understanding. And so the third floor is all these units, these are all rooms. And then the second floor, I haven't been in there lately, but I know the office is over here, and I think that was in the spa over on this side, is that?
Yeah, if I'm looking at it from, yeah, from the rear.
This is the lobby.
Yeah, from the rear, this is the lobby. This is actually sort of part of the spa. It's, has all the gym equipment, and it used to be a restaurant way, way back. And then the spa is over in these, these units.
Okay, and what's on the first floor?
Retail.
Those are all retail?
Well, I'll go back. This is the lobby.
Yep.
And currently, this was retail, and they converted this into check-in. So it's no longer retail, it's part of the hotel.
There's a shop and a check-in both.
Yeah.
They're both?
It's the, it's the, it's the check-in and.
It's like the concierge, like the, the little?
Yeah, you know, and the, 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 the retail of the hotel, you know, the swag. The hotel swag.
Unit C is then, then hotel.
Yep.
So unit B, you can come over, Sonny. Unit B, A, and then we have F, which is a pretty large area. Those are all retail, is that right?
Right, so in my new memo, I counted all those as being retail, because the twenty-eleve- for whatever reason, the twenty-eleven memo did not count that first floor at all. It must not have been requested of me, because otherwise I would have done it. I mean, it, it was fine with, with the board at the time. I know in Kennybunk at one point, they, they, and it was a Sunset provision, where parking wasn't considered for first floor retail for a while, just to see what would happen.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know whether that was, maybe something like that was going on, I don't know.
Yeah, this wasn't in Dock Square at all, so that.
No.
Because they're exempt from parking.
Right, so, but.
So this isn't, just for the, we're all on the same page, this is from nineteen eighty-seven?
Right, I just grabbed a plan, yeah.
The physical outline and all.
The only thing that's changed is the siding in the roof. I mean, is materials, yeah, but that's.
The units haven't changed.
But the use is, has.
The uses have, the uses have.
There's a spa in there.
Right, the spa right here, and that's what he's, he's, they're converting it back to.
To rooms.
Now I'm going back to.
Yeah.
And there are rooms on the left side, on the second floor?
Yes, and, and the third floor.
And that, that actually used to, used to be rooms?
Correct, it used to.
To a spa, yeah, go back to the room.
So, so it was restaurant and rooms, and then it was spa.
So, so are we gonna get to the point on the parking?
Yep.
I wanna, you're, you're looking at more than parking here, just to get your head.
Well, I wanna make sure, I make sure that we have all the uses covered, that we're looking at for parking requirements, that's what I'm making sure, I, I know.
That's what you caused me to do.
Right, yes.
And per property, because they're two separate properties.
So, the, the other property will share parking on this property, on one twenty-seven. They've always had that historical arrangement.
And only, that's, their only parking is.
Well, they have, they will.
There it is on the, on the big screen.
So, so if we're gonna look at parking and gonna say, "There is parking now associated with the retail."
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's been quite confusing because of the two properties, and I wanna make sure we're all on the same page as we're reviewing.
Oh, I just appreciate your patience, and the words we use sometimes are not, not the same either, so.
So this is the parking layout at one thirty-three Ocean, so not this one that we have the paper plans for, but down the street a little bit. This is the parking layout for one thirty-three. And we also have the, and I, I'm happy to pull up either one of these for longer, if people want to look at them.
Now, yeah, that blue line is, is what?
The, the blue line?
Right, the blue line, is that the property line?
I'll, I'll point, I'll point to it.
Yes.
Yep, that's, that's property line.
So some of the parking spaces are over the line? But that's, that must be the other property?
That's one thirty.
That, that is, that is a de butters property.
Yeah, that's those condos.
We do have, we run into this sometimes with older properties that, you know, they bleed a little bit from one property to another.
No, I just, just wanted to note it, because there's, there's plant, there's a hedge along there.
Okay.
Okay. I will also mention that you'll see at the, the left corner, there's a Curtis Lane. So what you see here with the parking spaces in the rear that are at the river, those, that was all, at one time it was pavement, and they pulled that up and revegetated it.
That's these?
Yes, all those are there. So now that's all grass vegetated area.
All twenty of them?
That's my understanding, yep.
Correct.
But that's the, how you get access to those spots is over on that Curtis Lane.
What?
And, and.
I think about their Adirondack chairs, they're not parking that.
No, no, it's open space.
Where they have big tents for, for wedding receptions, right on the river.
Has been parked there for twenty-five, thirty years.
So I'm confused, I thought we were saying we have a parking plan.
They have.
No, no, that was a different.
No, that's, that's the parking plan.
One thirty-three.
No, no.
That was approved.
Put them together.
Yep, that, that.
It was approved, and, and now we put Adirondack chairs there, we've changed the use of it. That's fine that it was approved once, but.
They have more parking than they need, so they grassed it over and.
We're not counting it as parking toward the need today, is what.
No, you're not, no.
Okay, well, that, that's why I thought that was the parking plan that not even showed.
They are counting.
We are.
They are counting those spaces as parking.
So they are and they're not, do you understand?
And we have a comment about that later down in the memo as well.
But if they're grassed, they can for what it's gonna be.
That's right, and that's what they're showing us.
And for one thirty-three.
That's right.
And I've got a plan from a long time ago that shows parking spaces on someone else's property.
No, they're telling you that's the current plan. Well, can we see the current plan?
No, that is the current plan.
Thank you, that's the current plan.
This is, this is one twenty-seven.
This is one twenty-seven, that's what we're talking about.
What, what is?
One twenty-seven, we have talked one thirty-three yet, we just saw a parking plan for one thirty-three. I have to keep these separate in my head.
I know, yes.
These are two separate properties, I understand there's a cooperation between it.
For the parking plan, we very much need to look at them combined.
I forgot to say one twenty-seven.
Same thing's happening, sometimes properties that are separate, all of a sudden separate out, and people are given whatever, and they say, "Well, those parking spaces are mine." No, those park, the parking spaces go with the property, not with the business.
What?
So the business has multiple parking spots, but the properties have parking. So the business has multiple parking spots, but the properties have parking spots associated with those keys, beds, rooms, retail, whatever it is. If I've got five and you've got ten, but we're sharing a couple of them, and then we get a divorce, I'm stuck with five. So I need to know what the parking is for the property, not the whole business as a whole, am I, am I being obtuse here?
I, I, I think that's, that's a concern. I think it's one that we have, have guidance in the ordinance that says that they're allowed to share. And together, we're saying that the two properties need to have this many spaces.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
And, and we need, I wanna see where those spaces are. And some of them are on one property and some of the other, I think that'll, hopefully that'll satisfy your, your need, but-
So let's focus on one twenty-seven, this is the one that we just reviewed, the building.
You bet.
Which, which is, which one is one twenty-seven?
Right here, what, what we have on the screen right now.
That's the one that is the current spa, I would call that the spa building.
That's the spa.
Yep.
Correct.
That's not the restaurant.
No.
Correct, it's just a spa, you know, and the rooms.
So John, how many spaces do they have in this location?
Um-
I counted them all, but I can't remember.
I went and ca- counted them myself, and I have, I, I don't have the memo in front of me. Um, I wanna say fifty-four.
Fifty-four. And, and that's all of the spaces inside this envelope?
Correct.
And these are all for the hotel?
Correct, and the retail, hotel, retail, spa.
Hotel, retail, and, and how about the fi- the, the boats that are off of there, the fishing boats?
So those belong to us, the, both four docks?
The docks, yeah, okay.
Belong to us, so we, we can lease it out.
So I, I got fifty-nine, I just, I just did a quick count.
So you have fifty-nine spaces on this parcel. And according to their uses on the letter that was updated on October twenty-third, you have fifteen sleeping rooms on this property. Four new sleeping rooms that you're converting from the spa. And then you have ten spaces here for eighteen forty-five square feet of first floor area. Um, I do have a difference in that floor area calculation, we can look over that, but, um, and then you have four spaces for the, uh, eight staff, so that's thirty-three spaces. And there is another, correct me if I'm wrong, there is another outbuilding on here that has a studio, was that part of the sleeping rooms or is that a separate room? There was like a boat?
Yeah, um-
I forget if that-
I didn't co- I don't, I honestly don't, I mean, I got the room count from, so I don't know whether that-
The, the main building, the one twenty-seven?
Can, can you grab the, the microphone?
So the main building has fourteen rooms and then you see the cottage, so that's the fifteen.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we were, the outbuilding, yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thirty-four.
Yep.
And you got fifty plus, thirty-four, got plenty of parking.
You have thirty-three, yep.
Yeah, we have plenty of parking, we never issue-
But, but we can count it still, even though we know it's plenty, if you have fifty-nine spaces, is that what you said?
That's, that's what I counted.
Okay, you, you have fifty-nine spaces and you need-
Thirty-three.
Thirty-four, if you count the cottage.
They had fifteen sleeping rooms already.
Okay.
As including the cottage.
Yeah, they included the cottage.
So you're adding four, that'll be nineteen.
So, so you have twenty-six available. How, how many, how many went, how many for the retail?
The retail was, uh, they have ten listed here, I have a different number for the floor area, but I, I wanna confirm that that's-
Hey, I took, yeah, I took the floor area off the tax map, so.
And then you have staff parking too, and then there's staff parking too.
The staff parking they already had included at eight staff members for four spaces. So, yeah, they, so they have thirty-three spaces used for-
Okay.
This parcel.
So there's twenty-six that are available by, by our account. And at, at the end of the day, on one sheet of paper, we need, we need this written, that simply. This many for staff, this many for rooms, this many for retail.
Yeah, I think I, I did that in my memo.
I saw one from two thousand and eleven, but I haven't seen-
Yeah, the, the new memo is, um, they did submit a new memo, I can pull that up here.
October twen-
Okay.
October twenty-third.
So here's the new memo.
So I, I had the existing and then the proposed for, for the two properties separated out.
So I was, I was curious, I counted between the two properties ninety-two spaces?
Yeah, I, I miscounted. So ninety-nine?
But, but-
Yeah, ninety-two.
Just as a, as a sanity test, fifty-eight's pretty darn close to the fifty-nine that you're saying, Nadia, on, on one twenty-seven.
Yes, and, and I, I just counted fifty-nine, so I, I agree with that.
So that, that's a good sanity test, there was all I'm saying, and the thirty-three's echoed.
Yeah, fifteen, yeah, I, I went out and I, and-
Yeah, so, so I, I was just, um, the last line here, we have current parking provided and proposed parking provided, between the two. I had counted, um, ninety-two spaces between both properties.
Yeah, ninety-two, that, yeah, that should be ninety, ninety-two.
Okay.
It, it must be a typo.
I was looking for a visual, this works for me.
Well, ho- hold on, just, help me understand the, the last couple of lines, that current, on the left-hand side, current parking required ninety-nine.
Yeah, it should be ninety-two, as in, if you add up the fifty-four and the forty-five, it's-
Current parking provided sixty-one, so that's a shortfall, is what it says, right?
Yeah.
You've only provided sixty-one of the ninety-two required. And then on the right side, proposed.
Yeah, I think this is, it was, I, I, I think this is, I think I have another one since then, but we were added up correctly.
Why, why does this, how, how can it say that we, we, we require ninety-two, we're only providing sixty-one and we are okay with that?
I, I, I think that this is, um, I think it's just a, maybe an administrative error, cause when I counted up the parking spaces between both properties, I saw ninety-two.
Yeah.
Um, so I believe this is simply an administrative error.
Yeah.
Well, what does it mean, though, proposed parking provided sixty-one?
I, I think this is-
That's administrative error.
Fifty-nine is one twenty-
That, that, this is, this is, this is an older-
So, so we need to up, oh, there's another version of this, I'm here.
Yeah.
The format is good, but the numbers are wrong.
Yeah, no, 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 I updated the, this and sent it in, so I might not have made it.
You were just trying to see whether we were paying attention.
Right, correct.
Okay.
It's a math problem.
Okay, so are we, do we wanna look at the, the parking layout for one thirty-three now?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just, just because we're almost there.
Remember's there.
But, but the action will be to, to get an updated version of this that shows what we all believe now, which is that there's adequate parking of this amount.
Yep.
So that somebody five years from now looks at this and they say, oh, yeah.
Well, that's what we're do- we're looking at it from fourteen years ago, right now.
Well, I know, and you know, even the smallest error back then, it gets magnified now, cause even those that were there can't remember exactly. What do we got here, oh, these are the ones that, some of them are off site, so to speak. Oh my goodness.
But you only have eleven parking spaces effectively on this slot, because the back parking by the river has been changed, that's grass.
It, it is, and, and-
Those are not parking spaces.
Back in twenty-eleven, and I didn't bring all the photos, I, I submitted some, that, this was the exercise. We went through where we were required to show cars parking there. And all the spots, so I had the photos, I only printed off one.
So I'm-
Yeah, there's a lot of photos in the-
I'm not looking for a photo, I'm not looking for you to show me that you can park where the Adirondack chairs are, I'm, I'm looking for something that says, today I'm required to have this, this many-
Twenty parking spaces.
Twenty parking spaces for the rooms and staff that, that are operating here. And, and for the restaurant, or whatever, whatever that counterpart is, and, and here's where they are, not here's where they could be if we rearrange the furniture. I don't, I, I, I'm not satisfied, just for the, for the avoidance of doubt, I'm not satisfied by a snapshot from two thousand and eleven. I wanna know today where the parking is that satisfies the requirements. E- even though I know some of them are gonna be over at one twenty-seven, that's okay, which ones are at one thirty-three, where are they, which ones are at one twenty-seven? Seems like it shouldn't be that hard.
Well, I, the, I mean, the only reason why this was being presented is this, this is, this is what was approved by the twenty-eleven planning board.
Yeah, but we weren't here, we weren't there.
No, I'm just, just-
And it doesn't, it, it's been overcome by events. It, what, what, what I'm hearing as an undertone is, well, actually, there's really only ten parking spaces there and they're the ones along the left. Is that the long and short of it?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Could you go back to the document that shows the counts of the current?
Yep.
Yep.
The document I'm looking at, and here's, here's one of the things.
Uh, make, make sure your microphone, yeah.
Um, so if, if I look at one thirty-three, which is where we are now, I show that you need fifty-four spaces. And thirty-three spaces are provided at one thirty-three, yet I only see eleven spaces currently. If I go to that diagram, it doesn't even have the thirty-three, it adds up to thirty-one, so-
Well, there, there, there are two, two s- spaces that aren't showing up clearly, um, uh, in that diagram. They're up against the building.
Two more spaces, so that gives me thirty-three. But, but it doesn't really give me thirty-three, because they're not currently being used.
They're not even available to be used, they're thirteen.
And then they don't, and they don't meet the town definition of what a parking space looks like, which is, got, you know, delineations and signs that say parking and stuff like that. There've been a few times where we've gone with gravel, but it been clearly marked out. Uh, so if I look at the totals, I still, I'm, it makes my hair hurt.
George, this is a-
Because I need a certain number of parking spaces for one and a certain number for the other.
Look at what you're using them for, you're using them for people who are coming to their rooms to stay overnight and people who are coming to the restaurant. It's not a special event when we put up a tent and gee, we could turn that area into parking, no, this is an operating business.
Right.
The staff needs seven, the restaurant needs twenty-seven, and there's twenty for the sleeping rooms.
And it says that there are thirty-three spaces provided.
But, but, the, the, it says, what I do believe is that fifty-four are needed, okay? Uh, I'm sorry, but no, and no, now fifty-nine are gonna be needed, because we're, we're changing it a little bit. If there's only ten available at one thirty-three, then I need forty-nine more that I can get from one twenty-seven. Does, does twenty, does one twenty-seven have forty-nine?
They only have twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Well, then we're short.
Yep.
Right, and I mean, from my perspective, I guess I don't, I don't necessarily care what's there today, right? I mean, I wanna know what is going to be required and day one, where are you getting them? And do you meet the requirement, and show us where, because if you're counting spots that have been grassed over in our lounge areas, you can't count those anymore. Unless you plan to remove all the grass and turn them back into parking spots.
So, again, I think that was the compromise that was reached with shoreline zoning, was to re-vegetate that, it was a better, it was a better situation, an alternative to remove that impervious surface that was there, um, that was for parking, that was historically, that was parking area. Um, I think what has changed, as owners have changed, is that they have taken that parking area and maybe have used it for something that wasn't the intent. Um, and now it's, I think, come to light to the board. Um, I, I, I think staff, from a staff perspective, I think we would still honor those spaces, but I think there needs to be a condition put in place that those have to be used for parking, it cannot be used for events, if that's what the intent was. And if that's the intent of the applicant, I don't know what their intent and goal is, um, but that was what was the planning board approved back then. And I think we should, we need to honor that, because that was the compromise that was reached, um-
And grass is nicer than pavement.
Right.
A- as a practical matter, that area is a core part of what, unless it's changed radically in the last year of, of the Breakwaters business. Those Adirondack chairs are a big draw, there's, uh, people use them and love them and they go there because of that. I don't think there's any intent, it, it doesn't make any sense at all to turn that into a parking area.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, we're agreed.
But I don't understand, it's, it's a practical matter, where are these people parking today?
That's right, that's a good question.
They're all to a Mabel's, they're at Dan's, or they're on the street.
So, see, um, this is the way we have structured the season, that we just bought the property.
Yeah, yeah.
If you see the main one thirty, uh, one twenty-seven, right, we have fifteen rooms there, we are asking for four more, right?
Right.
The staff parking that we say eight, we never use for staff, because we have a house in Kennybunkport, all my staff park there. And most of them are H two B workers, so they don't really have, everybody don't have cars.
Makes sense.
So we really don't need, you know, eight spots for maybe two for my managers, local, we also have Mabel's across the street. We have Port Lobster next door, you know, which after five o'clock, you know, six o'clock is, we have ten spots there to play with. So we really, and even the retail shops, if you see, most of the people who come, they park on the street.
Yeah.
And most of the hotels, they walk to these restaurants to eat, we don't get any issues where there's events or what, because the events people are coming, we book the whole hotels. So they are the one attending the events that we do on Saturdays, right, for the weddings. So the parking issue, we have never faced it so far, touch wood, and we have been running it, because most people walk there, you know, Non-Antem is there, Colony's there, the other hotels, they all walk to our property to have a dinner or whatever, right?
Yeah, I'm within walking distance.
Yeah, it's all walking distance, so the thing is, I think the eight mod for the staff is really, we never use it. And even for the stores, if you really see, there is one Dana's, then it's our store and a reception together, right? And then there's a small guy who, you know, runs a, a photographic, you know, store, he sells, you know, pictures and stuff there. So I don't know how that has been alo- allocated, do you know? In terms of the stores?
Yes.
How many you have for the stores, ten?
Ten, ten for the room.
Yeah, so again, that's the other thing, max people be using is six over there.
So I think, I think, I think what you're saying makes sense, and I think, you know, to, to Galen's point, and the, the board, you guys need to weigh in here, I'm, I'm certainly inclined to, to give a lot of weight to the fact that there is a, a grandfathered aspect to this. But I don't think we should be going wink, wink, that grassed area really is still parking, is, is the way to go.
No, that's, cannot be-
I think that's, it's just, it's obviously a lie.
So if you have fifty-nine, see, we have thirty, um, twenty rooms and fifteen rooms combined, right, we have thirty-five rooms for the hotel.
I like, I like thinking about it that way.
Right, so if you have thirty-five rooms, right, we need thirty-five spots.
Yes.
Right, so whatever is left over is, is, how much is the total we have without those grasses?
Fifty-nine plus the eleven.
So fifty-nine plus eleven, we're talking about seventy spots.
Okay.
Right, so we have thirty-five rooms, correct, so we have thirty-five spots left over to play. You know, that means we could use some for retail and then the rest, you know, people who come in for dining. But this is gonna be a house, right, the, the staff housing right now we have is gonna be like a five-bedroom, you know, a family, gonna stay there. So they will come with two, uh, two cars max, that's what we're looking at, to rent it to one family, it's not-
I think, I think this is, if you guys were open to that, that, that this is the way we should be approaching this, is that we wanna, we wanna do something that keeps the business viable. That recognizes the compromises that have been made, in part because of shoreline zoning and all, but here's a practical view of how, how they're gonna use this for parking right now, and it makes sense.
And also if you see the-
We don't need five spots for that five new rooms, because it is gonna be restricted to a certain use. That, that will only have two vehicles associated with it.
And, and this plan is actually reducing one.
So there is one, so just to let you know, there is, there is, um, there is one more spot, right, that could, two spots next to the kitchen there. There's clean two spots you can park, if there's one, you know, spot, and then the circle, if you see the circle, you could park car there too.
Absolutely.
Right?
Really nice mark.
So you can't park in that area because of your hotel, uh, performance standards, do not allow- So you can't park in that area because of your hotel, uh, performance standards do not allow for parking within that area.
Okay.
No, but we, if you see the distance we created, it's less grass now, right, in that zone a little bit? So if you see the curb, because, you know, we could do one car there and the other side, that doesn't even come in between, next to the building.
And that would be a s- s- staff parking.
Yeah, you could do that for staff too. So those two spots can go to the staff, then we save spots for the other building for staff housing, right?
John, you've gone real quiet here. I'm shaking your-
So-
I, I have the, I have the mic.
So, um, you know, something, you know, I, I, I understand what we're trying, I, I see where we're trying to go, and, you know, I certainly understand that, you know, I think the workforce has changed um, over the years, um, compared to what it's always been, um, you know, with the visa, you know, workers that do not have transportation. Um, but the, you know, employer usually does provide that transportation from wherever their housing is. Um, unfortunately, your land use ordinance doesn't have that language in there to give you flexibility on what number of spaces you need for staff.
Well, again, I think that we need to start with the premise that they're reducing the requirements from a previously approved.
So they're going from fifty-four to fifty-nine spaces on that lot?
And if, if we remove the twenty spaces on the grass, they're actually, I think, becoming more non-conforming, because they're removing the requirement for fourteen spaces, but we're decreasing twenty spaces. So it's kind of a net decrease of six.
I, I thought you said that happened with knowledge here that we, oh, oh, I see, but we, we, we still considered it-
We still allow them to park there, and they were parking there, um, but then, again, something-
Before, before my time.
Yeah, something happened, and people said this is a good place to do events and-
Well, it's not an event, it's, it's, it's part of the restaurant, it's, it's the patio right now. You go out there and you-
No, they're doing, they're doing weddings there.
Well, also-
Right.
And, and how are peop-, where are people parking for weddings?
So that's the beauty. So, most people who, uh, come for the wedding, they book in our hotel, so that, so they are getting the spot for the room, right? And then they'll stay in Colony and Non-Antem, or Mabel's House. So it's, so they plan in such a way that nobody wants to drive, because, you know, they wanna drink, they wanna hang out. So ninety percent, and we insist most of the time that they should try to book with us, till, you know, so we try to block the whole hotel for them.
Mm-hmm.
So, we never had issues, that's the good news, you know, nobody has complained, uh, or, you know, you don't have parking, we always have parking, you know, to use, that's not the issue so far. And I see the guest house is just added one, almost like one family, that's it. I'm not renting it to different people, it's just one family, mostly the, you know, the wedding, the, the bride or the groom's family wants to stay there. That's the idea behind it, you know?
Well, I, I know what I wanna do here, but Galen, you're, you're saying that, uh, I don't have the, the board doesn't have the discretion to, to do that.
So I, I'm gonna give you a little institutional knowledge, and John can weigh in if, if, if he'd like to. Um, but I've read the documents, and every time that there was a public hearing, there was, um, a butter, concerns that were relayed about over-parking. And I've, I have conveyed this to the applicant ahead of time, that to be prepared, that once we do a public hearing, that there will be questions about the parking performance standards for what's being proposed.
If, if, if they don't go ahead with the changes that they want, the parking requirements are-
Greater.
Greater today. So they wanna, they wanna take what is a current non-conformance, and they wanna make it better.
Is, is that the right language?
Except that the, I think the current setup was, is approved with those twenty spaces on the grass. So they're, they're actually making it more non-conforming if you remove the twenty spaces on the grass.
So, so they're not there, they're not available for use, so whenever that started, since that time, this has been non-conforming.
They, the planning board back in two thousand eleven approved those spaces-
Correct.
-to be used.
And, and then they stopped using them.
If, yes, the property owner decided not to use them.
Right, and, and there was no code violation at that time.
The planning board did not revise the, the plan.
The planning board wouldn't have been in the, in the loop on it.
No.
If they just moved, moved the Adirondack chairs out there, however that transpired, and, and business has, has gone on that way. You're saying as a practical matter, you can continue to go on that way? And that this will make it better.
So what's the bottom line now? I think you said six?
So I, I believe, so there, actually, ten, I guess. So currently, the spa area requires fourteen spaces. They're proposing a use that will only require four spaces. So it's a decrease in need of ten spaces, plus a decrease of two spaces. So a total decrease of twelve needed spaces. But they're also removing functionally twenty parking spaces.
Clearing it off.
And so we're, we're actually down eight-
Eight.
-from where we are currently, in terms of, in terms of officially, official parking to needed parking. If you remove those twenty spaces, will be a net decrease of eight spaces.
So you want to, and you, do, do you have access, if on, given a vent, you, you, you needed parking, you needed to park where those chairs are today? Could, could you make a case that that is overflow parking?
Well, well, that was, that was the exercise back in two thousand eleven.
We could use that.
That was your pictures?
That was the pictures, the, the, the planning board said, can you park there?
Demonstrate it.
Because the, the Adirondack, Adirondack chairs were there at that time.
Yeah, I see.
It didn't, they didn't come after, they were there. And the board said, can you park there? So we, so we, so we brought-
So we're, we're recreating that.
Let, let's ask that question. Could someone park there if you needed to?
Yes.
You haven't, you haven't blocked off access to it or anything else? I know you don't want, you don't want to, but-
Right on Curtis Street.
And-
You can cut through-
And, and technically, you could come through Curtis Street, but that, you know, that, I, I'm not sure if the current homeowner is aware that he has that right-of-way zipping through his backyard. But that's a different prob-, that's a different problem.
I think, I think that's one approach, if you wanna take it, is to say that is a overflow parking, a contingency parking, and, and you make your claim on it, and-
And you do have right-of-way onto Curtis Street, you don't have butt onto Curtis?
It's, it's, the, whatever that, uh, street that was shown, going from Fisherman's Wharf-
Yeah.
To the property.
That abuts the property, it's not right-of-way.
Correct.
It's, you actually abut the property, you abut that Curtis Lane.
Yeah. Or that paper street right there.
Okay, yeah, so that is your property?
Yeah.
So- Is this, is this, this property's patio?
Yeah, it's not lined up, but-
So it loo-, it looks like there's a patio in that right-of-way?
I, well, didn't, didn't used to be, but I'm not, I, you know, I'm not, like, the owner may not be aware.
Oh, the weather we leave.
Yeah. Right there, there we go.
So this is, this is our most recent imagery that we have access to. So I think, you know, we might wanna hear from the property owner how they would feel about cars driving over their patio.
But you still could access it through-
No, there is a space.
Through, through the-
Right in the living parts?
Yeah.
Right there, there's a space goes straight in the-
They can go in, I mean, that's the way we brought the cars in the last time.
Yeah, that's how, I, I've taken it there, because when we get deliveries, I park everything there.
Understood.
I still use it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, for other purposes, absolutely.
So, so why don't, why, why don't we leave it that way?
You see the gap here?
So you're saying you can access it from this parking area here?
Yeah.
Yeah, see the building, you see that? Yeah, there's a gap, that whole gap, you can just drive through that.
Okay.
So, so you don't need to go through any other road, I mean, I always, my trucks, my cars, everything go there, when we have to, you know, bring in stuff.
So you, you're using this as a parking area?
Yeah, we are.
Because in the morning, where else will it, you know, they have to go, you might-
I think, I think you wanna leave it that as a practical matter, we're not gonna operate with that, but, but in order to satisfy the, 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 the letter of the, the land use ordinance, just as you did in two thousand eleven, you're gonna answer correctly to the board to say, yes, we, we could, and we will, you know, hold those as, uh, as park, as reserved parking area.
In two thousand eleven, though, they weren't doing events there, and I suspect that-
Yes, they were. That's what I just heard, is they, they, the Adirondack chairs were there, that-
That's not an event, I'm talking about a full-fledged tent-
Oh, okay.
Event.
Right.
Where you can't park there.
Oh, so-
And I, and I only say that because I know you're doing it, and, and I think that's great, we'd love to see you do it.
What they do in the parking lot.
But the neighbors may not think so.
No, I'll, I'll tell you what it is. So, if you see the spa, right?
The tent, there's a, there's a long building, the tent is on the right side, closer to, you know, the old, you know, there's a private house there-
Yes.
-next to that. So still, the hole on the left side is always open, literally, right? That's where we use most of the chairs.
Yeah.
Right? So the tent is only once a week we do it, like Saturday, most of our events are on a Saturday, that's it. Other time we take it out, sometimes, you know, they'll come on a Saturday morning to put the tent. So we also have restrictions of how many, I think, weeks we can use it, so we know that, right? So we don't book more than that anyway. And we don't get, you know, bigger parties other days, right?
So, so, so just to, to clarify Peter's concern, when you do have an event and you set up the tent-
Right.
How many, if any, of the parking spaces are covered by the tent?
Well, I would say that maybe four or five, because that side is, we can't park. So if you see how it lays out, and also-
Not, not all of them, not even close to all.
No. So the, the thing is also the chairs, what he's talking about putting chairs, that time we take it all out anyway, there's no chairs outside.
Again, it, that's, that's, it could be, yes.
Yeah, it could be there.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, but we could park it there, it's no problem.
But the plan is, if I'm, if I'm having my wedding there, one of the reasons I selected is because it's so pleasant, sitting out on the river and watching the sun go down.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Please.
I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, with updating of that list of parking numbers to make the corrections on the ninety-one and ninety-two and ninety-nine, that I would say that this application is complete.
What, um, now I'm gonna clarify, if I may, we have, we have two applications. So, so I, I, you know, it, it, anyway, it should be combined.
I, I think we should look at them together, because the, the parking is the, the only issue that we have with, that I'm aware of with either one of them. And, and, and it's going to be solved collectively.
I agree.
So I think we wanna do that and hold-
And my motion that, uh, we deem both of these complete for the purposes of the discussion, approving them both at once.
So, so I'm, I'd, I'd like to do that, George, but I'm, I'm thinking that for the purposes of a public hearing, you wanna go in with a clear statement of how we're satisfying the ordinance. If there's somebody that doesn't, has, has objected to parking in the past, that they certainly deserve a clear statement of how we are using, wha- what parking is there, how it's being used, and how it could be used in order to satisfy the land use ordinance letter of the law. And, and you lay that out, you say, here's, as a practical matter, here's what's gonna, here's, here's how we're gonna be using it. And, and I like the idea of combining them on one piece of paper.
What, what I hear is we need a document similar to what we have for the current and the proposed parking, uh, corrected. And, uh, it's got the maps accompanying it, but perhaps numbering on the maps, uh, because right now, like, on one thirty-three, it says thirty-three spaces, but the map is really only showing thirty-one, so delineating those other two.
Those are the two, yep.
So that they're all congruent, so that when this comes up- when this comes up again fifteen years from now because of something, and they go back and say, but hit the board back in two thousand twenty-five, because this makes, it, it, it's gotten even muddier. Uh, just so long as it's clearly that these are, uh, being shared between these two properties, that here's, here's the spaces with maybe on a number on it or something, so that anyone looking at it would avoid this hour-long discussion.
Would you still show the grass as a-
Show the grass of the parking spot as it was in two thousand eleven, and can be used, I myself have parked on the grass in many fine places. And you've got access to it, and you might even, I don't know that we need signage, but we, you know, would need on that, on that combined diagram, let's treat them together as, as one shared parking plan, which is almost separate from the renovations and changes you make in the building, because those-
You'd underpin the sp- proposal, no?
You, you could make those changes building, it never missed the mind of the board once, it's the parking thing.
You guys should put it in your findings of fact.
Oh, we will.
Very detailed notes.
Yeah. We'll do, we'll, we'll do that.
Can we combine findings of fact on one?
I would recommend two separate, because they're, they're regarding the parcels themselves.
But I think they're both need to include a common document that says, a common statement that says it's shared parking.
You can, um, you know, again, we're going to have, um, obviously, you're gonna be signing a site plan, um, and they're going to sign it, you're going to sign it, and they're going to record it. Um, so certainly, we'll have that attached with the findings of fact. That way, that document's with it.
A single plan that we sign, or two plans?
Should both, uh, both parking layouts in this case.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if it's, if it's two plans, they share a common sheet, they have a, they each have a copy of the parking plan.
Yep. I can both refer to that.
Yeah.
Is, is the aerial adequate for one twenty-seven for the parking?
It, it is for me, I think in that photograph, those, those, uh, spots show it very well.
Okay.
And the other diagram as, as well. But, uh, rather than, maybe rather than, uh, numbers on them, but also taking the table that you have, that shows what the spaces are. Not even worrying about what the current spaces are, but what the proposed spaces are.
Okay, yeah.
And have that as a table on that plan.
Yeah, I like that.
And then we sign it, and it, anyone goes back and looks at it, here the, the, whatever number of spaces, here's the table for how they're allocated.
And, and, and it will have a sheet, though, showing that it, technically, it's a net reduction of spaces. Or do you even, no, not, not bother?
I don't even need a net reduction, I just need to see that the parking plan is adequate for one of his.
I think to Galen's point, I think we will capture in the findings that this is a net reduction, and it, you know.
But I don't need to know that it's net reduction.
But it doesn't say that on the plan.
Okay, okay, yeah, no.
And you're only using these.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
That'll work, that'll simplify it.
You know what you're doing, all right?
Sure.
Whatever he does, though, so, so my, my, my request and, and my advice is that both of you need to be comfortable with, with the paper that you go back to the board with. Don't, don't say, you know what to do, and then he sends it to the board, and you say, well, that isn't what I thought you were gonna do. No, don't do that.
I'm very comfortable with that, I can feel, I understand the-
Both of you should look at it, and you should say, yeah, if I had to sign it, I could sign it.
The visual numbers-
And then give it to Galen and, and, and-
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
You know, right now.
So noted.
I forgot to do that before.
Sir, continuing the review until we receive these documents.
Yes, please. And, and hopefully, we can put this on the agenda for two weeks from now, and, and-
Yeah.
And thank you for your patience.
No, no, thank you. I mean, it's, it is different.
So if you could just get any documents that we've requested, if you could just get them to me by noon next week on Wednesday?
Yeah.
That would be, that would be good.
The sooner, the sooner you get in the NADI, though, you send them out, and we can all at least nod and say, yeah, that, that's the, the, the way, that, that makes, I can understand that.
Okay.
I mean, we spent a lot of time tonight just saying, I don't even know what I, don't understand.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, so, so we said that was for one twenty-seven, but really, we're saying both one twenty-seven and one thirty-three, we've covered them this evening, and, and they're both, continued.
So you have two, 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 okay.
Yeah.
I'll write on the, put a number on, one, two, three, four, five, never just like-
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, John.
My guess.
You're gonna have a busy meeting on the nineteenth.
Cool, the nineteenth, I'll, I'll be here.
We're gonna go, we're gonna go for the next item on our agenda is, uh, number two, five, one, zero, zero, three, twenty-nine Nehawk Lane, Terrence Creek Reserve, Reserve condo.
I'm case manager, right, run by the way.
I'm glad to hear that.
It's been a while.
Oh, thank you. I was gonna use the chair.
Have we, have we, by the way, talked, we'll talk, we'll talk later. What, oh, yes, yes. I looked at this material.
My name's Kirsten Fordham. I am from Riverside and Pickering. I am here to present the project for Turbets Creek Preserve condo. We are proposing to replace a four-foot by two-hundred-and-thirty-foot walkway pier in kind. The bump out, I have to bring this with me, right? You folks have the plans, right? Yep. There's a, a bump out in the, right down in here that's, it's right there. That's also going to be replaced in kind, but what we're going to do, I should say replaced in the same footprint. What we're going to do is shorten it by ten feet and lengthen the gangway by ten feet to make it safer to, to traverse, but there's.
Can I kind of stop? Two, two things. First of all, I, I didn't get your name.
Oh, Kirsten Fordham.
I care stuff, thank you.
Sure.
You used the word bump out, and, and I, I didn't understand that when I read the material, and I'm looking at this diagram that you have up on here. What part of that are you calling the bump out? Is it in green?
When you walk down the walkway.
Yeah, yeah.
You come here, there's a bump out right here. So instead of just going straight right to where the boathouse is, there's a bump out.
I can take a left.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that existing today?
Yep.
That arm, that arm, you, you called the bump out.
Correct.
Okay. If I go straight, I don't go as far.
Correct.
It's still the pier.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so that will be shortened by ten feet so that they can put a ten-foot longer gangway, so that it's easier for them to traverse. The slope, it decreases the slope down to the floats.
So we'll go ten feet out more?
No further.
So the bump out is gonna come back towards land ten feet, and the gangway is gonna be ten feet longer. So it's, it's a trade for trade. It's.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, so the float, well, it, it's a gangway and it's gonna set on the float?
Exactly. So it's gonna, it's.
As the tide.
Yeah.
Right, so, yeah, so as the tide comes in, it comes up, and when it goes down, so at low tide, the slope is very steep.
Right, right now, does that go up and down? Is that?
It sure does.
It does, it's already a hinged.
Yeah, it's on a, it's on a hinge system. It's attached to a face plate.
But it gets very steep at the lowest.
Exactly, because it's a little too short.
Does it go all the way down? Is the water completely gone at low tide?
It does, at minus tides, I believe, it, it, it muds out.
Okay. So, yeah, I can imagine that it's, uh, steep.
So will the mooring, kind of where it's tied down, will that stay in the same space?
You mean for the floats?
For the floats.
So they have float piles. So they're just, it just rides up and down on the float piles.
So you're not moving any of that stuff?
Nope, nothing's gonna be moved.
Oh, wait, there, there's no float now.
Yes, there is. There's a float system.
But they're on pilings that, that kind of guides.
So this right here is the float system. We're not doing anything with the float system. The float system is located by float piles, not by moorings. So it stays in the same spot as a tide comes and goes.
So the only thing you're doing is just kind of redoing the access to those floats?
Exactly.
Oh, you're not, you're not putting in a new float?
Nope, we're not putting in a new float. We're putting in one new float pile that's missing.
So the bump out is gonna be replaced, but it's gonna be shorter than the one you have now, and that's not gonna miss the edge of the float?
Mm-mm, because we're extending the length of the gangway.
Yeah.
By ten feet. So I think their gangway right now is twenty feet.
It, it, so that, that, the gangway attaches, um, where the, the, the pier is to the float at that section.
The gangway is not shown on this picture.
So the gangway goes, oops, so here's the bump out.
Yeah.
The gang, this right here is the gangway. It's thirty feet long. Okay, so the bump out is here, the gangway attaches there.
There's a line, yeah. He, he sees the line.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
So, so again, you're, I, I know the nomenclature is what's getting me here, but that whole long green thing is not the bump out. The bump out is only the first three or four feet.
Well, it's, it's a little longer than that. It's, it's probably more like ten to fifteen, ten feet.
Wait a minute, this says that, it says it's thirty foot is, 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 it was the gangway, so how can it?
The bump out is the short section that's the continuation of the straight line of the pier.
Right, which is just.
I can show it to you on the, behind you. I feel like it's pretty clear.
Four or five feet long.
I think it's, it's such a long pier that I think that the scale is.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the bump out right here.
That's the gangway.
No.
No, no, he's correct. He's correct.
No, there is, yeah.
It's not just me.
So the bump out, see where it says thirty?
Right there.
Yep, that's the gangway.
That's the gangway.
And that little bump out.
The green thing is the gangway.
The green, well, they're both green.
All green. That, the first part of the green thing is the bump out, right?
Correct.
But then the next green piece is the gangway.
Right.
This is the hinge right there.
That's the piece that goes up and down.
Correct.
You get ten feet, so it's not as.
Right?
Right.
That's the hinge.
That's, yes, the, we'll call it the hinge.
We could be married.
Play nice.
Replacing it like, I'm assuming that is materials-wise and things like that, that you're not coming in with any crazy, you know, materials that are.
No, we're not. It's all gonna, everything is gonna, we're using pressure-treated southern yellow pine. It's marine grade. We're gonna lay down marsh mats when the area where there's marshy grass and the resource. And then we'll use, um, our barge to drive the one float pile that has left.
What, what you do. So I just, I, for, I'll ask for general purposes. As far as my understanding is, there's gonna be no change to the total length.
Nope, there's no change.
There will be no change to the width.
No change to the width.
Are there currently railings along the side?
Yes, there are.
So those are gonna be maintained?
Those are going to be replaced with new.
So it's fully standard right now? Is it, is it four feet wide?
It's four feet wide.
And you got all the spacing between the boards and all that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Nothing's gonna change, except you're gonna improve it by changing the length of the gangway. And to do that, it will mean removing what is currently a bump out that's supporting that gangway.
That's correct.
No change to lighting, no change to access, nothing.
Nothing, absolutely nothing is gonna change. It's just not gonna be broken and it's gonna be good.
And, and you're, you're not removing any of the piers. In fact, you're replacing one that is somehow or other missing.
Yes, it broke off.
Someone made off with a pier.
That's right. It took a pile.
Spacing is the same?
Yes.
It's before the planning board because you're making a modification to an existing dock, and we're real touchy about docks.
No, it's, it's currently non-conforming, isn't it?
Yeah, so when they're.
Absolutely non-conforming.
When it's damaged by fifty-one percent, the planning board has to, to take action on that.
Damaged by fifty-one percent.
Right.
Or altered.
Or altered, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
Was, was this damaged in the storms of last winter?
So it was. It wa, it, it lifted and it twisted. So to, you can wa, you certainly can, I mean, I've been on it probably a hundred times already, but, um, it's just, it's not, I wouldn't recommend, it's, yeah, it's not gonna be forever if it doesn't get fixed.
It wasn't washed away and you're replacing it.
No, it's not, but it's still there. It's just twisted now.
How long is it now?
Two-hundred-and-thirty feet.
Clearly non-conforming.
So that's, that's what's not, that's one thing that's non-conforming. It is conforming in width and in spacing. It, uh, it is conforming in that it's, there's enough space to the property lines.
It is also in the velocity zone, so.
Ah.
Another non-conforming.
So I was gonna ask about that. Is there a, there's a federal or state permit required because of it?
We have already been approved by D E P.
And what, what have they given you? A permit by rule? Is that what this is?
Yes.
Is that what's needed for a velocity zone?
The velocity zone is in our floodplain management ordinance, so, um, the.
The feds don't care?
I, I don't believe so, no.
Oh, okay.
It's just us.
Not a hazard to navigation.
As long as there's no stormwater, we're all set.
Okay, so we have the permit by rule?
Yes.
Bump out in nautical term? I thought it was at Kennebunk's Main Street.
It's probably a Riverside and Pickering term, to be honest with you.
The next town over bump outs were a big deal a few years ago.
Oh, really?
Oh, gosh, yes.
Oh.
On the main road.
And what, what, uh, zone of Kennebunk Port is this, is this condo complex in?
The, the zone?
Yeah.
Well, it's A E and V E. Is that, it's, no, it's residential. I'm sorry, I don't have that right in front of me.
It says the zone is the R E zone, and I don't know what that is.
It's residential.
Down Capeport, that's right. Residential, either Capeport, S east, or.
It's not, we don't have a, that's all I'm saying.
I think it's not the shoreline.
It is, it is shoreline.
Shore, in terms of, uh.
And resource protection. Those, those are overlays on a, underlying, on, on a basic, uh.
From the town, like in the town square or.
Is it on the tax map?
Oh, uh, you're looking for it.
Is the, is the property on the tax map? Yes.
What, what zone is it in?
It is in. Let me.
Cause it's not in the application.
I'll look it up quickly. It's in Village Residential East.
It's like the V got left off.
It might have.
R E, but it should be V R E. Do I need to ask the applicant to update that, or can we do that?
I'm, I'm happy to.
I'd like the application to reflect.
I, I can go back to the office and send it to you, Nadia. It's not a big deal.
Perfect, great.
That'd be better, yeah.
Not tonight, though. That, that'll be tomorrow.
We wouldn't hold it up for that either. I'm just, it's the type of thing that, like, again, five years from now, somebody else comes and, and looks at it and says, what are they thinking?
Five months from now, we won't.
And it's eleven and a half acres there?
Hmm.
That's a big property.
It's huge. It's beautiful.
I'm curious. On our, on our tax maps, it shows them as two distinct properties, the large portion and then the little island that the bump out is on. Uh, they're, they're listed as two separate properties. Um, so which, which one exactly, is the application just recovering both of them, basically?
So, hmm, it's, it's interesting. Um, the person, they're all part of the condo association. There's a person who, one of the, one of the members or owners, um, owns that. It's a boathouse. So it is part of it. I don't know if I'm answering your question really, but it is part of the condo association.
Okay.
Well, you, you make a point, though, that the deed information that we have, does that cover both properties? We need to be able to say that, yeah, the people who came in and asked permission for all of this are in fact the legal owners of the property. And you're saying this is, it's not one property. It's more than one. Right now, the application says that it's block three dash two, lot three A.
Yeah, uh, twenty-one dash three dash two A is the map block and lot.
Say, say again?
Twenty-one dash three dash two A. I think that there, there's just a, um, I think a typo on the application.
Yeah, so that, that is the other change that needs to be made. But you're saying there's really two lots?
Uh, yeah, so you can see, this is, this is our G I S map here. Um, you can see, this is the lot that we're talking about that has the, the pier on it.
Yeah.
And then this, we have it listed as a separate lot, and this is where the condos are.
Well, and, and a lot of the pier is too.
A, a little bit of the pier.
It's the, just the access to it.
So the most, I, yeah, I think that the pier is almost entirely on this lot.
Oh, okay.
Which includes that little, you know, this little tail. Uh, they are shown as different owners, though.
So to be clear, just.
That's okay.
In, in doing this, um, the gentleman that owns that boathouse.
That boathouse.
Also lives on that lot.
What, what boathouse are we talking?
The, the, it. On, right past the bump out.
Oh, so that's, that's actually a house, not a?
It's not a, it's a boathouse. It's no, it, nobody, it's.
You store boats and equipment and.
Yep, yep, okay.
But that lot there with the circle around it is eleven and a half acres.
No.
No.
No, the other one.
No, the, the one behind it, that.
This big one.
Well, which property are we do, doing a, a site plan review of?
This one.
Which one?
The small one.
Yeah.
With the, the little island.
So, so the lot size should reflect the size of the one that we're reviewing.
And that's my ear, and I'll explain why that happened, because I was confused as to why I was coming to. I think I expressed, I didn't realize that was the one lot. I thought it was the whole project.
No need to, no apologies needed. This is, this is, we're teasing it apart here, and, uh, you're, you're doing great.
Is ready to park?
But there's three, there's three, well, just, just to be clear.
There is. Lots of driveway, needs a parking area. No, I'm sorry.
There's three typos, right? The zone needs to be V R E, the block needs to be twenty-one, three, two A, and the lot size needs to be corrected.
So you don't want me to include all of the owners that own, cause all of the owners own the walkway. All of the owners own the walkway. They're all paying for the replacement of that, and one person owns that little parcel.
Somewhere in a subdivision, it's the homeowners' association responsibility to maintain that. I presume.
Yes, I see what you're saying, yes.
Not our, God, don't get us in a.
And is that a, that's a public dock for those owners?
Exactly.
That private person doesn't say, hey, get off my dock?
Right. So, yeah, that's a public that's shared by every owner.
Do, do we need to, I mean, that, there is some of that pier that goes on to the other property. It starts on the other property.
Well, it does.
Does that need to be included? That's a swimming pool there, I think.
Yeah, it's their common area for the association.
Yeah, that is a swimming pool. That's their common.
Yeah, but that's on the property. But is there a common area for that, the homeowners own that, they have a common area with a swimming pool and a dock where someone just happens to live down on this lovely fishing shack?
Okay, you're, you're, you're saying that the pier really begins on the larger property.
That's what I'm saying. Do we need to include both properties? I'm looking at the, the staff here for some guidance.
Are you start, where are you starting this rebuild?
Right at the very beginning, right there.
Yeah.
So.
So I would do both.
So it will cross over both lots, so I would say, yeah, include both.
And the other lot was twenty-one, three, dot, two Z?
Yes, twenty-one dash three dash two Z.
And that's, that's the one that's eleven and a half acres or so.
Yep.
Yes. So, so when you put, when you update the map block and lot, you can just put both two Z and two A?
Yep, I will do.
In the combined size.
Okay.
Now, having said that, are the deeds for both of those properties included in here?
I put the deeds that are related to this in there, yeah. I'll double check if there's one, I can make sure.
I, I confess to not reading them in detail. Okay. Any questions from the board that we haven't shouted out? How about from the, uh, from the memo? Anything in there that needs to be, uh?
So I only had.
I know you mentioned that there weren't setbacks.
Yeah, I only had two comments, one. Yeah, I only had two comments, one was that there were no setbacks included on the plans, this is just a, an administrative requirement that we have.
So I did put the, I did drop that off for you. And I added them, you have, you should all have a copy of the plan, but they're right here, the setbacks are right there.
So that satisfies that for me, and then, um, I had one question, I, I did see your email, Galen and I have been at a conference, I haven't read it thoroughly about this um, cistern, I think, that, of the septic situation, so I, I was just asking um about like the cistern placement, just to make sure that if there was a septic put in it, septic system put in at some point, that the dock um replacement won't affect the septic system at all, that's, that's it, it's not.
Okay, oh, oh, cause I was trying to get everybody's um bills.
No, 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 I.
I'm like, can you send me your sewer bill, please?
We just kinda, we just usually make sure when there's construction happening that it's not affecting the septic field or anything, so that's, that's the only thing I was looking for information on.
Okay, so I misunderstood that. So um you are all set, we are not gonna be anywhere near, there's a driveway that we use, and we're not gonna eat, to get down to the property, um, and we're not gonna be anywhere near septic, they're on public and um, public water and sewer. The boathouse does have a septic tank, we're not gonna be anywhere near it, it's on the other side.
Great, that's the only thing that I was, I was wondering.
That was on sheet one of your plan set, um, there was just a little small.
And it's just because the plans, I think, are from, what, ninety something?
Yeah, ni- ninety-eight.
So because, you know, because they're from ninety-eight, just wanted to make sure if there had been an update that it wasn't going to interfere, but if you're far away from it, then I have no concerns there.
Do, do you have a thought as to how the construction's gonna be done, where the material's going to be staged, I'm assuming it's all being done from the land?
So some of it, the, the pile that needs to be driven will be done with a barge.
Okay.
Um, we probably will bring in our barge at high tide because it's, it's hot, deep enough for us to do that. And we'll get the other piles that need to go, their support piles for the walkway, we'll get those driven, the one up on the land will be done by hand. Um, we'll move out at low tide, so we're not sitting in the mud or in the substrate. And outside of that, we'll be doing a lot of it by hand, you, from the marsh mats, cause it's pretty low up closer to the start of the walkway. So once we get all of that done, once we get the, the piles across bracing and the caps on, then everything will be done from the top.
I noticed that the, the DEP um put a circle around the guidance on erosion and sedimentation controls.
Yes, so we'll have a turbid, turbidity curtain, we'll have the marsh mats down, so where we're working, the turbidity curtain will be, we'll say Waterwood side of us, so anything that, it'll protect it from getting into the resource.
And you, you're saying we, you're, you're with the contractor?
Yes, I work for Riverside and Pickering.
Say, say again the name?
Riverside and Pickering.
Oh, oh, thank you. The bump out people.
The bump out people.
Your previous comment made sense to me now. I didn't get it. Um, any other questions? You say this is a complete application, I would move, anybody second that?
I'll second.
Second, yes.
On favor?
Aye.
Four, yeah. So we would be ready.
Public hearing eleven nineteen, so that's two weeks, public hearing.
All right, perfect, and I'll get that to you tomorrow, Nadia.
No, I'm looking for a volunteer for this, I.
Thank you for your time.
Don't think we have, just talked about a, a case manager for the uh one twenty-seven, one thirty-one, have we, one thirty-three? I, I would, I would take those if someone else would take this.
I'll, I'll take this, I've, I've done my share of docks.
You've been waiting to say that since February.
You don't deserve one on your first meeting.
Well, and you can keep saying that you have it all the way through to the, to the final. Last item on the agenda this evening is uh two five oh nine oh one, one twenty-five North Street. And uh, this is a public hearing scheduled. Evening.
Good evening. Once again, my name is Andrea Rolieri, also known as Andy, and I'm the Volunteer Board President for the Kennebunk Port Historical Society. And we're here tonight to request site plan approval for the construction of a new archive and research center. And once again, we've said that the building is essential for protecting the individual collective memories of the community that we are storing. The current archive was relocated into the Pasco Center multipurpose room. And beyond being full, the space was never designed as an archive. There's no light control, no regulation of humidity, and no fire suppression. So it puts the entire collection essentially at risk. And these are all very important, long-term conditions for storing materials that, I mean, we have things from sixteen hundred on up. A lot of paper, um, diaries, documents that really are quite vulnerable. And now that everything, including the historian's office and where interns work and the collection, everything is sort of crammed into the multipurpose room at Pasco Center. So the new archive building will provide us with state-of-the-art, compact storage systems, secure, climate-controlled environment for long-term preservation and storage. It isn't open to the general public, essentially it's a warehouse for the collection. It's accessed by staff, historian, researcher, anyone, but it's not a public attraction in any way. Instead, it joins the Pasco Center through the new research office, and that'll also be the place where visitors would come in, meet with our historian, it may be where an intern comes in, and in turn, it makes it so that now when we do have research requests, we'll be able to go to an organized archive in a more efficient manner. And then, finally, the multipurpose room that's at Pasco will be restored to what originally it was, where some of the objects are on display. The board for the Historical Society meets, where if we have larger groups, like we had a group from St. Anne's that were looking for the history of their building, that's where we can congregate. So for us, this is really a transformative project, um, because it will ensure that these materials are gonna be preserved beyond, you know, three years, I mean, we're talking generations. It'll probably survive the Pasco building, but needless to say, um, for us, this is essentially a, um, very important project, a vital project. And again, it isn't an attraction, we don't, you know, it will not increase staff, it will not increase the amount of cars that come to us. Um, I mean, might wish we'd be wildly popular, but um, this physical change won't suddenly make tremendous impacts. Um, we did provide Nadia with any of the um questions that came up, um, which included, you know, changing to the enterprise zone on the application, um, making sure you had a clear view of the um, the site plan, we even included a photo of the sign to show you that it would be consistent with the um carved signage that we have at the schoolhouse and all. And um also minutes from the board meeting to prove that I am the president, or current president. I'll be replaced in time, I'm sure, we keep rotating through, but um, again, um, we seek approval of our plan. And if anybody has any questions, just don't ask me about parking spaces.
Any questions from the board? I would uh. To open the public hearing? Obviously, there's nobody here at the firehouse, is there anybody online?
We do have people online, but no hands are raised.
So, so was I clear, the, the, the public hearing is open, if there's anybody in the audience, the Zoom audience that wants to speak, would they raise their hand now? If not, then we will close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, make a motion that this application is complete.
No.
Oh?
Even more.
Even more, that we approve this application.
That's right.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we wish you all the best with that.
Thank you.
Good work.
So next steps, um, we, we could talk afterwards, cause they're gonna have to do a findings of fact.
George is gonna be the case manager and write that up.
Okay, so that'll be in two weeks, you don't have to show up for that.
Okay.
Uh, but we'll be in touch about getting that recorded with the registry.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and then in the historical documentation.
Yes.
I'll, I'll send you an email.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for waiting.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, this was an experience. I don't think I'm volunteering for this board.
Please do.
No way.
But it was very cool that you did say intern and in turn in the same sentence, that was awesome.
Don't get him going.
I'm not, I'm clearly leaving, the two of us.
There you go.
Thank you, yeah.
I thank you.
We do have noted on the agenda that there is an other business item, an extension request for Adele's Way, Nadia, can you help us with that?
Yeah, so they haven't um completed, or I believe even started their projects, um, they're just asking for an, a one hundred eighty-day extension to um get that building permit and everything situated.
This was the four lots that were off of the.
The family subdivision, so it wasn't a subdivision plan, they just um submitted a site plan to build a private road. They have not completed the road, uh, I, I think they haven't started the road, and so they're simply asking for a one hundred eighty-day extension.
And then this is for their kids, so it's not a subdivision, because they're, they're deeding it to their kids?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's the plan.
Right.
And we, and we got all those deeds from them, the sample deeds, the attorney looked over it and everything, so, yes, we're good there.
Make a move that we accept that uh request for extension, one hundred and eighty days. Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Any other business, gentlemen? And I would entertain a motion to adjourn? Could I have that?
So moved, a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, these are fantastic, if you're.
Good.